All right. So I'll call to order Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, March 18th, 2025 to order. Please stand and kindly remove your hats and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Now we will rec- now recognize the Assistant Manager to please give us the meeting procedures and the call to roll.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to the members of the board, staff and public for joining us this evening for the March 18th regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you were in attendance virtually using the WebEx platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairperson calls on. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending the- attending using the WebEx platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. Finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the WebEx meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Mr. Heller?
Here.
Chair Yankorn. All right. Thank you. There, actually, there is an announcement. So remind me of the date. We did have an executive session that was on Wednesday. What day was that?
March 12th.
March 12th. So, yes, we did have an executive session on March 12th pertaining to legal matters, personnel, and I think there was also a property acquisition as part of that, so.
That's still last week.
So, last week, yes. But there's been a lot going on since then. So that will move us to item three, public comment. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the board with an item not on the agenda should ask and be recognized at this time. We kindly ask each person to keep their remarks to five minutes when speaking. We'll alternate between comments in the room and online. When speaking, please remember to state your full name and neighborhood of residence. Anyone in the room? Not seeing anyone online. That will then move us to item four, the approval of the minutes from the March 4th, 2025 meeting.
This is Patty, motion to approve.
Okay. And do we have a second?
This is Matt, second.
Motion by Patty had a second by Mr. Heller. Any corrections or modifications? If there are none, all those in-
Well, actually, I just wanted to, under the COG reports, I just wanted to say that the Parks Governance is a separate committee. It kind of got lumped into my Parks Capital thing if it just gets pulled out as a separate committee and under Parks Governance, we talked about our, we're going to be reviewing MOUs and agreements. That's it.
Do we need a motion for that update? Or a motion to amend with those updates that Patty just stated there? Or is that administrative?
I think it's just like concurrence by the motioner in the second. So, and since Patty made the modification, Mr. Heller, you accept?
A second. Yep.
So the motion with the modifications, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Item 5-1, we have our reports and presentations, diversity, equity, inclusionary activities and acknowledgements. For the month of March, we have Women's History Month, Greek-American Heritage Month, Irish-American Heritage Month, and Agriculture Month. Employee Appreciation Day was observed on March 7th. International Women's Day was observed on March 8th. Ramadan ends on March 30th, and March 31st is Transgender Day of Visibility. I apologize, I do not have an updated copy. Yes, you are correct. So I will recall item 2-1, which would have been a presentation on the Chamber of Business and Industry of Center County's Economic Development Plan presented by CBICC Executive Director Greg Scott and CBICC Board Member and Township Resident Zach Moore. I apologize, I had the right copy. I totally glossed over it.
We take no offense. Good evening. So my name is Zach Moore. I am a Ferguson Township resident. I am also on the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Business and Industry of Center County, commonly known as CBICC, and I'm also the Chair of the Government Affairs Committee for CBICC, and it's in that capacity that we, I am here tonight. We found, we believe that it's very timely, given that Ferguson Township is entering into its own economic development strategic planning process, that we would update you on the CBICC's Center County Economic Development Strategic Plan. And to do that, my role here tonight is to introduce Greg Scott, who's the President and CEO of the Chamber, and will walk us through a short presentation. So thank you again for having us.
Great. Thanks, Zach. I appreciate that introduction, and thank you all for having us tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you for the work you do for Ferguson Township. It's appreciated, and I know it's sometimes a thankless job, but it's well deserved, and I appreciate the work that you do. We do have a presentation. I don't know if you have that queued up? It is, it is up?
He's bringing it up.
Okay, we're bringing it up. Great. Well, let me just start with, as Zach mentioned, I'm the President and CEO of the Chamber. I've been the President and CEO for about three and a half years. I had the pleasure of coming and speaking to the Board of Supervisors here probably three years ago. It was early in my tenure. We were just getting started on my tenure and what was to look at, and I was giving you a glimpse of some of my goals and objectives, one of them being to put together an economic development strategy for Center County. So I'm really happy to be here today to talk a little bit about that. I'm not going to take a lot of your time. Some of you have already seen this presentation before, or at least a version of it. I've been going around and talking to the various councils and board supervisors across the county and sharing the plan and asking for support, just in terms of either a letter of support, a proclamation, or a resolution. We have received support not only from various municipalities, but also the county, Penn State University, Not Lyndy Medical, Not Lyndy Health, and also a number of private companies have supported the plan as well. So happy to be here tonight. I did want to take a moment and just share a little bit about CBICC and what we do and what we're about. So if you go to the next slide, please. Little bit of lag there. So CBICC, as a chamber, we support businesses. We have over 740 members as a part of our chamber. That's up from a little over 600 from the time I started, so we're on a positive trajectory. And what we are working to do is to create value for not only our businesses, but our community in supporting growth and prosperity in our county and working across it. In addition to being the chamber, we are also the Economic Development Organization for the county, so we're working on attracting and retaining businesses and growing our economy across, across the, across the county. How do we, how do we pay for ourselves? We collect membership dues from our members and economic development supporters, but we also have a lot of non-revenue, or non-dues revenue that we approach through, things like having events and programs that support us, but also working with various community members to support what the chamber does and the mission we have. Go to the next slide. It's a little bit of an eye chart here. As I mentioned, we are, we are a membership organization focused on supporting our businesses. You can go to the next slide. I kind of covered all of these, these items. That's a team. We're small, but mighty, I like to say. So we've built this team over the last three years, focused on economic development. We have a membership director, a person that focuses on events and programs, and then also public relations. Go to the next slide. I will say also, and talk a little bit about Zach and our board, and I see John Sepp's in the back, he's one of our board members as well. We are governed by a board of directors that oversees the work we do, that sets the vision and the strategies that we move forward with. So really appreciative of the board that we have and the guidance they provide to our organization. So events is a big part of what we do, our engagement with the community and our members. So we host a number of events in a variety of topics and ways that we do that. We have business after hours where we'll go out to businesses, get, allow those businesses to highlight who they are and what they do. It's an opportunity to network and create business relationships in those. We hold those monthly and opportunities to meet various businesses across, across the county. Our Voice of Business Series is really one of our signature series. We hold these six to eight a year. They can either be breakfast or luncheons, and we have topics that are relevant to, to the county. Some of you probably have attended some of those. We, in January, we had a municipal manager's update, which Centrice participated in along with some of her fellow managers, updated the, the membership on what's happening in the various townships in the center region. I can say, and I said this to the managers after the meeting, it was by far the most positive feedback we've received from, from our membership on that update. So I talked to the, to the, to managers about making an annual event, and Centrice stepped up to the plate to be kind of the Chair of organizing that next year, so I appreciate, appreciate her efforts. We hold ribbon cuttings, lead and learn sessions, so opportunity, a variety of topics where we can educate our, our membership on, on low-cost things that are relevant, maybe topics of, of interest such as AI in business or marketing opportunities. So we bring in experts, we allow them, the membership, to engage with those experts and have an opportunity to learn. Go to the next slide. Other chamber events, we annually for the last three years have held the Local National Civics Bee here in Center County, where we were one of, last year, one of six counties in Pennsylvania to hold that. This is a national competition for middle schoolers. Centrice was a judge last year, and she's a judge this year, so very active in the chamber and I appreciate all that, all that she does. So it's a great event. It's happening on April 15th. If you have an interest and want to be impressed, come see these middle schoolers on April 15th. They will blow you away with their, not only their thought and how they go about it, but how they carry themselves, and part of that competition is a, is a live Q and A with the judges. I walk away every year very impressed and very encouraged by the youth of our county. We started a new series this year called Networking the Valleys, and that's really to get out to across the county, and we've got these networking opportunities that we're building every couple of months. We're working in, in collaboration with the Happy Valley Adventure Bureau. We were in Phillipsburg first in December. Last month, we were in Millheim, and we're working our way around the county and providing opportunities to engage at different parts of the county. We hold our annual golf outing. If you're a golfer, May 16th is, is our CBICC Golf Classic. It's going to be at Talk Trees, so if you, if you have an interest, take a look at that or contact me. We have our member appreciation business after hours every year, where we just have an opportunity to invite our members and thank them for being a part of, of the chamber. And then lastly, our signature event, which we hold in the fall, is our annual awards celebration, where we signal out those contributors in various categories that have made significant contributions to our community. Last year, we had 225 attendees. This year, we're shooting for 250. We held that at the, at the Nittany Lion Inn. It's a fantastic event, and if, I would ask you to keep your eyes open for that, and if you have an opportunity to engage, that would be fantastic. Go to the next slide. Okay, let me jump into our economic development strategy, strategic plan. Can go to the next slide. So why did we do this? And I had kind of teased this the last time I was here, three years ago, and there were a couple of things we had to put into place before we could actually launch on this strategic planning effort. And the first was, I wanted to bring on board a Vice President of Economic Development, his name is Todd Dolben, to really add capacity and expertise to our staff. So I wanted to bring him in first. That took a little while to work with the board to identify a funding strategy that we could fund and support that position, and then go and find the right person to fill that role, and we absolutely did. Todd joined us in late spring of 2023 and just has been a fantastic addition to, to our community, and he grew up in Ferguson Township, too. So. One of the most important things about developing this plan that I felt was important is, was to create some synergy across many of the organizations and municipalities and companies to, to really synergize the efforts in economic development. So it was very, very critical to us that we developed a process that was community-driven. And so the second piece of the puzzle that we put together in addition to buying, bringing on Todd, was to develop and put together an Economic Development Council, and that council was made up of our investor-level members plus economic development partners that would come together. It ended up being about 45 individuals that participated in guiding the development of this plan. So we were very, very intentional that this was going to be a countywide, community-led, and developed strategic plan, not one that was solely put together by CBICC or owned by CBICC. And I got to tell you, this is probably what I'm most proud of in putting this plan together, was the engagement that we were able to bring together to put this plan together. I think it made the plan stronger, and it gave us the launch to be able to execute in a community way. And I will, Zach mentioned it earlier, the plan now for Ferguson Township to put together an economic development strategy is exactly what we were hoping for and thinking about, and I think your leadership in this, I'd like to see this continue throughout the county, because this countywide plan is kind of the, is kind of the big picture. And to get down to some of the local levels, to have a plan that's specific, that addresses some of the, the key issues and key opportunities within the municipality is really critical. So I applaud you for moving in that direction, moving to put together a more localized strategic plan, but with an eye on the big picture, to keep your eye on what we're trying to accomplish, because we can all work together and make the county better as we grow. And then lastly, I mentioned a little bit about this, in the execution of the plan, the opportunity to energize the community in general to, to be able to accomplish the goals and strategies that we have in this plan was really, really important. We realized that not one entity, not CBICC, or not one group within Center County is going to be able to accomplish a plan of this magnitude without everybody contributing and being a part of it. Go to the next slide, please. So here's a little bit about the timeline. Again, we started this back, we assembled our first Economic Development Council meeting in, in June of 2023. We hired a consultant in the fall of 2023 and launched into the planning process, which took the better part of about nine months to do. And it, the next slide will talk about some of the engagement we had to put this plan together. It all culminated in the release of the plan in October of this last year, October of '24. We had over 300 community members participate in that launch. We had state representatives there to talk about this plan and how it aligned with the statewide strategy, economic development strategy. We had the county involved in that, and we also had Penn State. Neely Vindapudi was there to offer not only her support, which Penn State was incredibly supportive of working through this process, but also her ongoing commitment to making sure this strategy and Penn State's involvement in executing the strategy was there. Go to the next slide. Okay, so this is really the heart and soul of the plan. We had a number of focus groups. We had individual interviews. We met, the Economic Development Council met four or five times, and we did surveys to collect data. We hired a consultant that looked at all of that, conducted the interviews, and synthesized many, many ideas that came forth down to really four buckets that we wanted to focus on. Number one being business retention and expansion. So with this economic development plan, we wanted to focus on the businesses that are here, and we wanted to help them find a way to grow. So this was looking at our small business community, our entrepreneurial community, and the companies that are here and how, what are the resources they need to be able to either start a business or grow a business and keep a business here in Center County. The second area was looking at how can we attract and grow industries within Center County? So we took a look at and really lumped this into that targeting and emerging business area. One of the key industries that we are going to be leaning into is the technology industry, or more specifically, the sensor network industry. We have a number of sensor technology companies right here in Center County and in the center region at large, other counties around us. In fact, there's over 100 companies that work in this space with over 2,200 employees. We, we have a real strength in this area. The university has a strength in this area, and it is our belief that if we focus on this and help these companies grow and attract companies into this area, we actually think this can be a cluster of companies that could grow, and we've, we've kind of loosely termed it, and it's kind of catching on, that we'd like to be known as Sensor Valley, and, and one that, you know, like Silicon Valley or some of these other places, that this is where sensor companies come to start, grow, and expand, and I think we could grow a workforce around that. Third, workforce and education. You see that in every economic development plan. How can we attract talent into our, into our county? How can we grow the talent here? And how can we, how can we expand our workforce? So we're, these are strategies that are going to lean into developing that workforce, making sure we have the workforce for the future, and we're continuing to grow. One of the things that our research and data showed us is that Center County is one of the few counties in the state that's projected to grow over the next 20 years. We're going to add probably 25,000 residents to Center County, so company growth and finding a, an opportunity for those residents to find employment and work in these spaces is going to be really important. And then lastly, the built natural environment. This is focusing on tourism and recreation, working with, really in close partnership with Happy Valley Adventure Bureau, moving forward in strategies along tourism and outdoor recreation. recreation. Tremendous opportunities here. That has been growing as an economic driver in our area, and we absolutely want to continue to push in that direction. On the infrastructure side, housing. This is a topic that gets mentioned over and over again as we go around the county and we talk. And I know you guys have discussions about this, affordable housing. How can we tackle that? As I just mentioned, we're projected to grow. We already have a housing shortage. How can we tackle this and solve those problems? So that is absolutely one of the areas of focus that we have. And then lastly, on an infrastructure front, when you think about our infrastructure system, our road system, our development areas, where are the opportunities to develop and grow to create business and jobs? And then lastly, the airport is another area of focus. Just in general, we believe that the airport, the airport area is a development opportunity. We want to help our airport grow and be stronger, particularly in the area of attracting and retaining flights in and out of the State College Regional Airport. And we've got some strategies we're starting to move forward with to make that happen. So those are the four targeted focus areas of the plan. And I'll mention, well, mention it now. You can review the full plan, which I think we sent over to you. It's at centercountyforward.com. It details each of these areas and goes through all the strategies, the goals that we're looking to accomplish in these areas. Let me go to the next slide. So what are we working on now? There's a number of initiatives that are underway, and when you take a look at the plan, I believe there are 32 specific action items. That's too many to take on at one time, so we're boiling it down to what's our highest priority we want to move forward with first. And some of these things, we are looking in the workforce. We've got a Center County Job Fair we're planning for later in May, working with Penn State on a procurement webinar. And then we've worked with the state to put forward a venture studio proposal where there's an opportunity, again, to work with entrepreneurs and startup companies, provide venture capital funds in partnership with the state. Again, back on industry and growth potential, working with the sensor network and working on building that cluster. We submitted in collaboration with SEDOCOG and Penn State an application, a grant application to EDA to support the early stages of building out that cluster, really the organizational structure around that. So we're really hopeful in that. You know, with the new administration coming in, we're not sure where the grant stands and the process on that, but we're hopeful to hear on that soon, which will really accelerate our work in developing that cluster. And then the third piece of this is, you know, focusing back on housing. We're going to hold a housing summit, which we're going to bring together experts from around the state, within the state government, to provide opportunities to learn about strategies that others are employing, grant opportunities and programs that support our goals of growing the housing, providing affordable housing in our area. The airport and Rockview, State Correctional Institution, are our development opportunities with the, you know, I mentioned Rockview, and Rockview's been in the paper because it's on the proposed list to be closed. And that may create some opportunities for us as a county, depending on how that turns out. But I will say, we had identified Rockview and potentially some land, underutilized land that's not on the tax rolls, that's owned by the state, as development opportunities that we could lean into. That is in our plan, but long before the state announced that they were going to potentially close that correctional institution. So it may just accelerate some of our conversations with the state about how that land could be used. And our goal at CBICC is to hopefully take a leadership role in defining what that land could be used for and how it could potentially solve the number of challenges that were identified as we put this plan together. And then I mentioned the airport. We're working on strategies right now to attract more airlines, more routes to and from the airport. Through COVID, we lost some flights, and we're building it back up now. But in what can we do to really expand and make our airport more of a regional destination and opportunity? I can tell you, when I talk to businesses that are either here or proposing to come here, a lot of the times, the airport is the number one concern they have to get in and out of. This area is incredibly difficult. You've got to take one or two or three flights to get to where you want to go. So businesses take a very close look at that, and a lot of times, it becomes the determining factor in not choosing to come to the Center Region to set up their business. Let me go to the next slide. I think that's it. So, all right. Well, that was really quick, really fast, but I just wanted to give you a touch point on what we're doing, how we're doing it, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here and discuss the excitement around this, the energy around it, and what we're envisioning will happen as we move forward. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Patterson.
I saw him writing down lots of questions.
Oh, yeah, I'm loaded. Locked and loaded. So I really appreciate that. Thank you. You mentioned early on, probably around Chart Two, that you appreciated Ferguson kind of embarking upon an economic development plan. Really quickly, from your perspective, define economic development.
Well, for me, economic development is not just about creating new jobs and increasing the tax base. It is community development at large. It's about working on all aspects of our community, the infrastructure pieces. It's about attracting companies here. It's about creating an environment where companies want to come, they want to stay, they want to grow their business, they want their employees to stay here, they want a good quality of life, they want a safe place to live and work and play. And so it's really all encompassing. I think if you had asked me that question 20 years ago, it would have very simply been, I want to create jobs and I want to increase the tax base. But now it's so much broader because we want to create an environment where our community can thrive.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Number two on my list. So it is your recommendation, then, like for every municipality to undertake the same thing, what you've done at a kind of broader level, and just like the state has a strategy, for every municipality to do the exact same thing, kind of do it municipal, municipality by municipality?
So I haven't gone and asked, when I've stood in front of the other municipalities, I haven't specifically asked for a localized plan. I think you're taking a leadership approach to look at that, and Centris and I have talked about it before, even, you know, I think years ago, about the idea of there being a localized plan. I think it's smart, and I think having, I think the idea that the state developed their strategy, we were several months behind putting that together, but we were able to work closely with them, understand what those strategies were, how could we work together? And then Ferguson being just months behind us is a great trickle-down approach to how economic development can be successful and work collaboratively as a community.
Thank you. You've mentioned federal landscape, and maybe not go too deep, but what you have there, how is that impacted by this current landscape? Are there things that are perhaps on the ropes right now as a result of where we are kind of nationally? Just curious.
So I'm not worried about that. I'm not worried about the national landscape impacting what we do. I think this is a localized plan that we are focused on. I think there's so many things we can do to advance our community that are not dependent on what's happening at the national level. Will some of the things and some of the policies and what's happening at the national level, maybe they'll have an impact on us, and I'm sure they will. There are some things that have come out, particularly in the research area at Penn Those types of decisions are going to impact us locally and how that translates into a challenge that we have that maybe present new opportunities or new ways for us to think about, how do we drive our community forward? I think we have to be thinking about those things. You know, the topic of tariffs, I'm not sure how that's going to trickle down to our local businesses and how that's going to impact them, but I think we need to keep an eye on that. But if we're keeping an eye on the long game here, our strategies transcend some of these types of things, and we'll be able to adapt along the way.
Copy. Overcome and adapt. And then on Chart 13, I did see there were some broad things that were kind of across county, but some of the broad things were also very Benner-specific, college-specific, Patton-specific. Was there anything that came out of it that was Ferguson-specific? Just curious.
I don't know. I mean, we did focus on potential high opportunities for development around the airport, and that wasn't specifically to say, hey, that's Patton or Benner Township. If you think about airports, you look at airports across the country, there is generally industry that surrounds airports. It just makes sense. There's that connectivity opportunity to travel. We don't have that where we are. Our airport is fairly remote, but there is a lot of land, developable land around the airport. I think that's a specific opportunity we have in front of us. When we looked at Rockview, that was a tremendous amount of property, and we've had success as an organization in working with the state, with the Department of Corrections, and transferring some land for development opportunities. So we've worked with the state, and it's a long process. You have to go through the legislature to get it passed and approved, and the governor has to sign off, and then you work with DGS. It's a year-long process, but we've been able to successfully do that. So we looked at that and said, that's an opportunity for us when there's not a lot of developable land to do what we want to do. Thousands of acres sit there at Rockview, and if you drive by there, they used to farm it. They used to, the inmates farmed it, they grew their own food and had their own animals and fed themselves. They don't do that anymore, and a lot of that land sits unused, and it's an opportunity for us to, I think, lean into that. And now, with the potential closure, it may create another, just advanced acceleration and opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Sure. Anyone else?
If I may, and thank you for that because it gives me a lot to think about. And also, I just want to say, Zach, it's good seeing you, and I appreciate all the work you did with Penn State's Office of Government and Community Relations. So glad to see you up in front of us here. A couple of things that I just wanted to maybe go through here. How do we anticipate data sharing with municipalities? If the economic development plan's been done, and, you know, Todd and others have already leaned into it in the CBICC, and here comes Ferguson wanting to do economic development. Can we talk a little bit about how information's going to be shared between what you've learned and municipalities that are going to be leaning into this?
Sure. So, one, Todd specifically is highly collaborative. And I think Centris will, I mean, I think he's a part of providing some advisory services and connection with Ferguson through Centris, so there's a high level of collaboration that's occurring there. How is that information going to be shared more widely across the county, not only with Ferguson? That centercountyforward.com website that I mentioned is the repository. That is going to be where we share successes and what's happening and what we're working on. So as time goes on, you'll start to see that be populated. That'll be a bit of a dashboard for our success in seeing how this moves forward. Our Economic Development Council now shifts into a role of accountability in making sure that we're holding the community responsible for moving this plan forward. So I think there's going to be a high level. We also started a newsletter that is specifically focused on the successes coming out of this plan. It's called The Economic Edge. We did, I think, our second one just last month. That comes out every two months. You can sign up for that specifically, individually. You can sign up for that on that website and get that newsletter sent to you on a regular basis. So I think there's a number of ways we're building. If you have other ideas, I'm happy to take those on, too. I don't know if we've uncovered every opportunity to share that data, but those are some of the ideas and ways that we're doing that, Matt.
Thank you. And I think that speaks to the synergy that we heard you talking about, right? That idea, if we could get there and at the table to have the conversations early before something that's on a website, et cetera, to be able to influence and have those conversations is something that I'm looking forward to see us collaborating on in the upcoming months and years down the road. The other thing that was mentioned was, of course, the sensor network. And I'm sorry, I'm a sensor person. I've worked on avionics sensors, railroad sensors, weapons sensors, undersea sensors, fun stuff. So years ago, we had an airport like a mile and a half from here, probably even less than a mile and a half, half a mile, that was, you know, great for HRB and then Raytheon and others that were situated here. But those were anchors, right? Raytheon was an anchor. HRB was an anchor. And I'm wondering, and I'm curious to see where we can maybe land an anchor, you know, somebody in the sensor area that really can spark this environment of innovation, development, and turn this into Sensor Valley. I love that.
Yeah, I think, you know, I don't know if it's our goal to go and find that anchor, that huge sensor company, but we have a number of companies here that we can help grow. And what does it take for them to grow and understanding that? I envision that, that we grow in terms of those 50, 100, 150 employee companies that come in, and that's really going to be our strength, the number of those companies coming in. Are we going to have an HRB or a Marotta Erie or a company of that scale? Maybe we will. But it's really hard to land those, and there's a lot of factors that go into that. But if we are successful at developing this industry cluster and be known as the place that you come, you engage with researchers at the university, you have a workforce that is here that's trained in this industry, and we have an environment and a great quality of life, I think then, again, we set up that ecosystem that will attract and may attract that large anchor company that ends up here, or maybe we grow one organically here. So that is the goal.
And that is my hope. What you just ended with is that idea that there's somebody out there that could be the future anchors for other areas. And if we have the ability to go ahead and nurture that technology and then see where it goes, I think that's very promising. So I'm excited for this very much. Thank you. My only comments.
Lisa. All right. Seeing nothing from Lisa. Just some comments. I really appreciate that the housing piece was a part of the plan. I think that is very important. I saw there was a lot of emphasis on the airport when it came to like travel, but one area that I'm rather passionate about, and Patty knows where I'm going with this, that I think should not be underscored and we could use advocacy for is the expansion of passenger rail. We are currently, through our CCMPO, doing a study on how we can try to connect our residents to the train, whether that's in Altoona or Lewistown, and Trec's planning to double their routes on the Pennsylvanian by next year if all continues to go well. And, you know, I do see, well, I understand it's not necessarily maybe as quick as like the airport. There are some advantages for business travel as well as even tourism. I know there's a lot of people that have expressed if they're like traveling even just a few hours away, they really don't want to drive. So having opportunities to be able to just ditch the car and get there would be, yeah, helpful and beneficial. I think especially within like the tourism area, that would really be a benefit.
Yeah, that's great.
No one else? I was going to say, this is just informational, so thank you for your presentation.
Great. Well, thanks for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Moving back to item 52A, we have authorities, boards, and commission reports, and tonight we have the University Area Joint Authority Report presented by Mr. Mark Kunkel.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present a quarterly report on UHA activities. I think in your board packet, you received a copy of the report that was provided by Wes Gleeb, the other representative on UHA for Ferguson. I just want to highlight a couple of things. The anaerobic digester and sledge dryer project, this is a $74, $75 million project. million project. I think last time I told you, when you, as you're driving on I-99, if you just look to the right, you'll see a tremendous amount of construction going on there. The project is intended to replace our current composting system with a digester and sledge dryer. This digester then will produce biogas and methane, and that's going to either be sold or used on-site to replace other fossil fuels. The drying building is projected to be completed yet this year, July, and this will allow UHA to begin producing dry biosolids for sale as a replacement of the composting facility we used to operate. The digesters themselves are projected to be operational by December of this year. UHA has contracted with Belfont, Tyrone, and Mid Valley Sewer Treatment, wastewater treatment facilities, to bring their biosolids to UHA. And we are currently working closely with the Center County Recycling and Refuge Authority to figure out how we might be able to get their organics over to the plant also and be able to use that as a resource for biogas development. Further, this is going to be a location where expired food products are going to be able to be brought to the plant, and we're going to be able to unpackage those and be able to reprocess them. So there's, we're looking at contracts to be able to do that. I'd urge you to take a look at the UHA website. There's a rather expansive presentation and information on the biosolids project. Obviously, you've been aware of the rate dispute that we have with State College Borough. We currently have a complaint filed in the Court of Common Pleas. The Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Act states that any customer that questions the reasonableness or uniformity of the rates are to file suit in the Court of Common Pleas. The Borough, as you know, has chosen to go a different route, which not, isn't provided for under the Municipal Authorities Act, and they've decided to withhold partial payments to the authority based upon a volumetric rate that they paid in 2021 under an expired agreement. We've attempted to do mediation with the Borough, and we're hoping that we can come to some reasonable resolution of this. But there is going to be a notice. There was a notice sent out to the UHA rate payers in December of 2024 explaining why there was another rate increase. And in April, customers are going to receive another information piece to explain how we've gotten to where we are right now and what the justification is really, and the reason for the rate increase. Last but not least, UHA recently purchased its Solar One, which is Phase One of our solar array. We purchased that on January 1 of 2025 for $4.6 million. And there's a second array that we'll be able to acquire also probably in the next four or five years. But the results of that have been really phenomenal as far as the amount of energy that's been produced and the reduction in energy consumption at the plant. It's producing about 80% of our electrical power, and this is, the plant is very power-intensive. So what we're not using at the plant, though, we're turning the meter the other way and sending it back to West Penn. So that's the end of my report for this evening, but answer any questions you may have.
Two things. Number one, the 80%. Do you remember what the projection was of the amount that it was going to supply?
I do not.
Okay, cool. If you could get that, that would be very helpful, particularly as we look into our, you know, the township investing more in these types of things. Like, if we know that, well, you estimated conservatively 60 and it's doing 80, that's good. Those are good numbers. And other solar arrays throughout the county that are out there, you know, kind of the conservative numbers that have been used. And then, number two, the overall financial impact of the energy and treatment plant projects, does that include this additional, kind of, if it was estimated less than 80, does this number include at 80 or something less? And also, the new contracts that you're looking to do with, you know, for the, hey, give me your expired meats or, you know, vegetables, is that included in this number, too? I'm very curious, like, how much more is this going to come down based on what you just described?
As far as the net benefits?
For the net benefit, yes, sir.
Yes, that is included in the net benefits. The solar array, the reduction in energy that we've purchased, used to purchase from West Penn, that's included in that, as well as the projected sale of methane gas that we're going to be able to put back into the transmission lines that's going to be used by Transcontinental Gas or whatever transmission facility is located close by. But all, I don't think this even includes, though, there's another component of this that's not as certain yet, but there's almost $30 million in federal tax credits that we potentially could get from this project. So, but as you said before, some of the things are in flux right now at the national level. And so we're, we still got our fingers crossed that that is going to be a component of the savings.
That's awesome. Thank you, sir.
If I may, I think this sounds good. Mr. Patterson, I appreciate your questions. And I think this would make a lot more sense to me if I actually saw it. I know we've talked in the past about having a tour of UHA, but it would be helpful for me just to see the facility, understand, I know it's a huge consumer of power, but to really put it in perspective for what we're generating from the solar panels, to see what some of this methane capture might look like, to understand, you know, a little bit more about what's coming down the pike. I think that'd be great. I'd love to go ahead and see it sometime. Just putting it out there.
Is that something the board is interested in doing, or is that, I can arrange that for individuals, or?
That'd be good.
Yes.
Want to go, Lisa? Lisa's good. Unanimously, we want to check it out.
Okay. I'll see if I can get that arranged, and I'll coordinate that with Centris.
Thank you.
Any other questions or remarks? I was going to say, I have one, Mr. Kunkel. I remember.
Mark, please.
Mark. Yes, Mark. I remember several years ago, I can't remember what it was, but there was a particular component of the system over there that was out of service, and it caused the area to be very odorous at times. And I was actually over that way last night, and I honestly, I, like, I was nearly gagging. There was some lingering odor over there. And it's been a few times that I've, you know, smelled that within the past year. And it's like, I thought that problem was resolved. It was, but it was just very strong yesterday.
Well, I don't know why that would be. There was a substantial amount of money spent on an odor emission project that has been folded into our biodigester and sledge dryer project. So the money that we spent on it is not going to be wasted, but I don't know why that would be, but I'll try to get an answer for that also.
At least that's what I thought I was smelling. It smelled just like it did a few years ago. And, yeah, but, you know, just curious of that.
I can get an air freshener for your car.
I needed an air freshener on my person because it was just like. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Item 53A, we start with our COG and Regional Committee Reports. HR Committee was canceled. 53B, the Land Use and Community Infrastructure Committee, and we'll recognize Supervisor Strickland.
Thank you. So this was actually a joint meeting with the CRPC, the Center Region Planning Commission. And it was very interesting. We had a guest for a Q and A. This was Jeff Sigler. He is a planner and is actually also a council member of Mount Lebanon, PA. And so he was there with us for an hour, hour and a half. It was very interesting, the perspective he brought in answering some of the questions that were posed. Mike Tilka had a list of questions and some other questions spawned off of that. So it was interesting. And I'll just hit some of the highlights of the conversation that was had. A large focus actually was on the regional growth boundary and its really critical part in preventing sprawl. So the regional growth boundary and its alignment with the sewer service area. That was, that was kind of an overarching theme of the conversation as I took it. And Mr. Sigler kind of emphasized that the key, once you have a regional growth boundary, as we do, is to resist that pressure to expand. Of course, here in Ferguson, you know, we're largely bordered by preserved farms, and, you know, so we're kind of secured in that area. But, you know, it's still, it is very important to keep in mind, as well as the other surrounding municipalities. But, yeah, just something to always consider, you know, when there's discussions about density versus expanding the growth boundary. Mr. Sigler was just really wanting to emphasize how, you know, sprawl is just so devastating to areas and how density and denser communities tend to thrive. So there, we're looking more at our, you know, within the regional growth boundary, centering way down into downtown. So he said, taking any open space in farmland is a net negative when replaced by sprawl. So it's kind of an interesting way to look at it. And part of that density discussion was focusing on redevelopment as well. Like I said, not using up those greener areas, particularly when they are existing. Now, you want to value what your residents have invested in their homes and neighborhoods and communities and not, you know, take away from what they've created as their aspirational living situation. And so, you know, respect for the residents and their environment and, you know. He said, let's see, and that kind of fed into how careful planning affects health and wellness. He talked about the aesthetics of the built environment and how design ordinances, code, and maintenance is a critical part of economic development. And I think that that does get looked over a lot. And so, you know, even beyond the Planning Commission, it was not a great focus of when we reviewed things or when we talked, even in the right of the zoning ordinances. So I think that's something to, for us to think about some more as well. As part of that, he said, we should be asking more of developers and businesses. We should be asking more of them. He said, you know, especially in an area like ours, is very desirable to live in. You know, it's not a question of if people want to come here. So, you know, if somebody's interested, you know, ask more of them. So don't shortchange your residents and your workers just to, you know, secure something. He said that red tape mitigates risks, that red tape being codes and permits, and that it doesn't scare away investors. He kind of emphasized that those kinds of things indicate an affluent area, you know, and people who take pride in their area and will work hard to keep it the way it is. The other interesting thing that he talked about, that his comment, it came up in the Spring Creek Watershed Commission meeting as well, and I think I brought it up, the downside or negative effects of tourism. So that was another thing he brought up, that too much focus on visitors gives less attention and resources to residents. In the Spring Creek Watershed Commission, we talked about the detrimental environmental effects that can be had when you kind of bolster tourism too quickly or, you know, have too much that an area can't sustain. And so that was really interesting. You know, resources are finite. And so whether you're talking about money or attention or land, you know, using those things for the people who are here all the time versus trying to attract more and more visitors, he said, you know, you really have to think about that carefully when you're embarking on some kind of campaign or something like that, if that's of interest. So it was very interesting. And this was all kind of to help us with the comprehensive plan. And so at the end, somebody did ask a question about what are, what are the issues with having a shared comprehensive plan that encompasses so many municipalities that are so different from one another? And it is a challenge. CRP, the planners did acknowledge that. They said they have some ideas about how to manage that challenge, but I think it is something that will only grow, you probably, before the next comprehensive plan update. So also just something to keep in mind for the future. So that was it.
Yes, Mr. Heller.
Yep. So thank you so much for that, Lisa. I appreciate it because I would agree at 100%, but we know I don't do that, so I would agree with everything at maybe 73%. I'll have to go to the tape because it sounds like everything that was covered in that, in the discussion, were, are really things that we're trying to tackle here in Ferguson Township. And maybe there are some things that we can take forward. So for me, I think the question is, well, where do we go now with that information? Are there things that we can talk about as a board where we might be able to identify some low-hanging fruit, some opportunities, some ways that we can say, hey, we've gained this, you know, service knowledge, now let's see what we can apply. So I'm wondering, you know, this is maybe a work session or some other conversation that we would have as supervisors around that to figure out what can we actually do with that information and that data to say, here are some things we want to lay out. So I don't know if that's, that's not more of a question, I guess, for you, Lisa, more of a comment for others to hear, is what can we do now with that data and information? Because it sounds like it's aligned to a lot of the things we're already hearing, be it for accessory dwelling units, be it with how do we rezone, be it about looking within the boundaries that we have and not pushing out to the farms, right, which are protected and they need to remain protected, they should be protected, but looking internally at some of the opportunities that we have. So I guess, again, I'm raising this as a challenge of what can we identify as things we can internalize and come to fruition. That's the question.
I think, you know, part of that, too, you know, like I said, it was, you know, this balance of understanding what the residents who are currently here value of what is existing. And so to not overlook that was, you know, an emphasis of that. And so, and then the other thing that I made several notes about was that, you know, your, you know, the aesthetics, the actual view of the built environment, and how we've talked for a long time about trying to get a designer review board or historical designation on areas in Pine Grove Mills before you try to redo things. Areas that have preserved their historic nature have that kind of thing. You know, the Borough has a designer review board. So really looking at, you know, things that we've already decided to do, like you're saying, Matt, and just haven't done yet. And so I think, I think you're thinking the way I was thinking when I was listening to this stuff.
Awesome. So, yeah, I guess, thank you for that. Maybe just a challenge and something that we can consider as we go forward. Thank you.
Yeah, Lisa, and maybe this is just a future thing, but the ask for more, I am very curious what they meant, what that speaker meant by that. That was an interesting statement. Yeah, ask more from developers. It's a very interesting.
I mean, yeah, and this was part of this, the aesthetics of the built environment. And so, you know, if you go to some communities, places that have, you know, a well-known facade, you know, we'll change that a little bit to match what the town or city is requiring. So that kind of thing. You know, when Sheets went in on Whitehall in '26, we worked with them, once the. You know, when Sheets went in on Whitehall in '26, we worked with them once the, the development plan came in and we saw the lighting plan and spoke with residents in the area and worked with them on the lighting. And they went back and reconfigured how some of that lighting around the gas pumps was going to, was gonna work so that it wasn't so overwhelming to the neighbors and that kind of thing. But that's, that's where that was going. Don't just assume a no from a developer if, if there's something that jumps out in a plan.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Got anything, Patty, or?
I do not, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, that, that was a good report, Lisa. I was gonna say, going off of that, I, I just remembered I went to a Sam's Club in Wesley Chapel, Florida, one time where it had terracotta, terracotta tile roofs. And I'm like, hmm, there was some good planning going on. It was actually a very nice facade.
We're gonna see your home covered in terracotta now, is that?
Nah, I don't think so. But, sorry, I'm thinking back to what I was actually gonna bring up. I had first heard about this presentation through the Planning Commission, you know, and I thanked Bill for sharing that with the Planning Commission, that it actually intrigued me so much, I actually went back and watched the recording, which normally CRPC meetings are available on CNET, but I don't think that one was recorded for CNET. But if you go through the Center Region Council Governance website, they have a nice recording of it. Would encourage everyone to watch that, so. Thank, thank you, Lisa. And, yeah, I was gonna say, if anytime we wanna bring people together and have a discussion, you know, let's keep that in mind, so. If there is nothing further for that item, we will move to 53C. The Climate Action Sustainability Committee meeting was canceled, but I just wanted to check, Mr. Heller. I, I just wanted to check if there was anything that they had brought forward. I know we're in the midst of the, the refuse contract changes and...
Don't put your trash cans out until April 1st, the new ones.
They are in public service, and I'll be, they will not collect your trash if they're there. And if I recall right, the new bills are coming out this week or may have already been sent out. So I, I remember the Center Region Refuge and Recycling Director, Ted Onufrak, Onufrak was saying on the radio, you know, just double checking the bills, you know, making sure everything looks correct. And he did say there was about like 400 customers that got their pickup date changed. He said, the current haulers going from five trucks to new hauler will be able to cover everyone with three trucks that there will be enough efficiency buildup in the day that they'll be able to actually collect more customers. Reason why those 400 got moved around, so. And if you don't get your can, I believe it was by the 24th, and all the information's on township website, if you do have questions, it's after that date that you would call the Refuge and Recycling Center to just say, I don't have my can, and they'll take it from there, so. All right. So that's it for that PSA. We have Public Safety Committee, Mr. Patterson was recognized.
Thank you. Public Safety was actually really good. There were a couple, I think we've had some struggles with kind of how to, what is that committee driving? And so we, we kind of went back to basics on talking about just what are the services within the scope of the committee? And we came to learn there's, there's a lot to it. It's, it's a lot of municipal, individual municipalities that have fire, emergency services, EMS, and police, all interworking, touching each other, backing each other up, a lot of that goodness. So it's really, really informative in how well the, the center region's working together from a public safety aspect. I think, I just asked a, you know, kind of simple question, would a funding is decreased? And so then there was a, you know, kind of, I looked around and, and we don't really know, they didn't really know. And so that was my ask, was that, hey, folks, you know, as, as you start to receive less federal money, less state money, and it's on the localities to find those dollars, what do you do? So that, that's, that's just something I'm, you know, in asking CBIC, CBICC about what their kind of thoughts are of this federal landscape. I mean, this is all rolling downhill as to when grants start disappearing and, you know, cutting, what do we do at a local level? So we've started, they're gonna start thinking about that. Center Alert or Alert Center, that's a really good service. It's a new system, there's, you know, there's some kinks that are being worked out. However, it is more dynamic than the old system insofar as if you were on that system and you've gone to the website and signed yourself up and put your, your mobile number, it can actually send an alert to the mobile numbers in a given area or humans in a given area. So it's really good. I would encourage the community to sign up and, and if, if they're interested in those And then finally, First Energy came in to kind of talk about what they do, and, and they had a few things, kind of resident actions. Number one was, you know, if there's an issue, and Sunday we hit, hit an issue, and unfortunately we couldn't have this meeting before that, but it was call and call again. They, and don't assume your neighbor called two, because if your neighbor calls, that's one call. If you call, it's two. If 500 people call, it's 500 people. If 1,000 people call, it's 1,000 calls. And that's how they manage their work. If they see that there's 3,000 calls in the area and there's two in another one, they're gonna hit the one with 3,000 calls. So just call and call again. Everybody go to that firstenergycorp.com and, and say, hey, you know, I got a problem. Number two, update your info on the site, make sure your information's up to date so you can receive those, those, you know, if there's an outage coming or if there is an outage, that you can receive that information. And thirdly, that there are jobs available. There used to be a, a center in Erie that they had set up where they would train their linesmen. However, it was an unpaid thing. You need to kind of pay your own money, go stay out in Erie, learn, and then you'd get a job somewhere in, in this state or some other state. And you need to have means to do that. And now they're doing paid internships. So for those that are kind of, this is just more of a PSA, for those that, that now want to get into a trade, it's not just the regular trades, there's also this linesman thing where you can actually apply for one of these paid internships, on-job training, get paid, and you don't need means to be able to do that. So it's a much more equitable model that they've, they've rolled out. Lastly, it was a warning that there's an option to get variable rates. And the, the gentleman that came in said, I would recommend not doing variable rates. They've seen some folks kind of go, hey, what the heck? I just, I went from seven cents to 23 cents, that's a real story. And it's because of folks using variable rates from other, other entities. There are over 9,000 homes here in Ferguson Township that, that use First Energy, so it's a, it's very sizable. The borough only had 12,000, so we, we have a lot of folks utilizing that area. So public safety, very good meeting, and we're gonna keep driving towards getting more, better understanding of where our public services are working together, which also leads to what are we funding and what we need to do locally from a budgetary perspective to be prepared for public safety writ large. We already did it last year, our budget increase was associated to fire and police, right? So we've gotta keep, keep those thoughts in our mind as to what, when we have higher funding amounts than coming each year. Over.
Any questions? One thing I was thinking, and I think this is a little bit outside our purview, but I remember you mentioned about like Center Alert, and I was, and you even brought up about the electric company, and I was thinking about, I noticed something based off a Facebook post from Center County 911 on Sunday, as well as even another Facebook post from Center County 911 when, I think it was, or maybe Deer, when Deerfield lost their water, it seems like sometime, it's almost seems like maybe the 911 centers are getting a high call volume of utility issues or outages that aren't necessarily like an emergency. Like, I, I remember they posted the other day, like, they don't know when anyone's power was gonna be restored and, you know, left in numbers for First Energy and the respective electric cooperatives in the county. It's just kind of concerning because like, it, it was a very overwhelming situation for the 911 center between down trees, down lines, but then even just people, I guess they had people calling in, you know, my power's out. So, you know, don't know if there's any answers on what can possibly be done to like educate or hopefully, you know, at least give, you know, maybe bring some of those calls down. You know, understandably, if, you know, somebody's in danger or there's an emergency, you, you call 911. But, you know, there are other avenues depending on what specific situation you're experiencing, so.
It might be a newsletter, township newsletter item perhaps, you know? I, I think if we get, what's that, storms like that, and they're expected more and more and more, given where we are, that it might be just an educational point there, but I'll defer to the manager on if that's a possibility.
So happy to share, I attended the public safety meeting and, and certainly got to meet Jason, and he's our representative for West Penn Power, and he had a chance to talk with the member municipality participants that are part of that consortium. And he had, he had said, you know, please email me, you know, instead of calling, like emails quicker for responses, provided access to website information where individual residents who can perhaps use their phones if they have access to the internet, because perhaps they don't necessarily have power, but would be able to go and look to see what the power outage response time looks like. He also indicated that there's an automatic two-hour response, so even if there's a non-storm event and you have a power outage, their immediate response is gonna say two hours. They very well could be there within 10 minutes, but they're going to say two hours. So I wanted to provide that information because we do provide information on our website. So on Sunday, and I would say though, however, that it's not something that we can guarantee is a reliable source every time, but certainly always encouraging our residents to go to the West Penn Power page because they do provide a wealth of information. Every couple of hours, they're populating it with the number of residential communities that are with, that are without power. And so they do try to provide contact information for residents, and they do provide, I think you can opt in and you can get service updates as well. So they have a webpage dedicated to their customers, and then what we try to do is we populate our webpage with information on what, you know, if we have a road closure, for example, due to the storm event and/or contact information for West Penn Power. So that was populated, I think around four o'clock on Sunday, staff had provided updates, kind of had like a communication consortium via text, and we're able to get information on our website for, for our residents, so.
I get PMA, like from Pennsylvania Emergency Management, I, at the beginning of each season, I get a, you know, hey, prepare for this upcoming winter season or spring storm season that has all sorts of handy things too. I think, I don't know, maybe I signed up for that, so it's another resource.
There are a lot of resources. I think oftentimes what we try to do every couple of months, or at least one time a year, is provide access to those resources. So, you know, it is a point in time where we try to get into the hands of the residents, here are some resources, and then ultimately it's up to the individual to program their phones or whatever, you know, mechanism they use to maintain. I don't know about you, but when the storm happened, I was probably not going to be able to locate a newsletter or any type of, like, it was more like, is everybody safe and get away from the windows? But really, actually, my role was, hey, chief, what's going on? What road closures do we need to populate on our webpage? But I would imagine the average person, so we do try to put information out on our website, and we do put information once or twice a year in our newsletters that just says, like, here are our resources and here's what you can expect as a resident, here are some contacts that you might wanna consider putting somewhere. So if you do have a situation, you can refer to them.
If I may, and I think one of the things, and it just happened today, especially on the West End, when the power goes out, and it happened today, like 10:15, Pine Grove Mills, when the power's out, there is no internet. The router's down, this barely even works because there's like no cell signal once you get past, you know, out to the West End. So when I was calling West Penn and other, you know, trying to report it or figure out, did I pay my electric bill? Is that what happened here? I don't know. You know, in trying to make that call, you can barely get a call out, and it is kind of this satirical, you know, sad joke, when you're like, check the webpage, I can't get to a webpage, nothing loads, you know, it just takes forever. So I think building that muscle memory, maybe from putting something in the newsletter or something, just to say, please, when this happens, call these folks, not this. You know, just to, to build up that sense of understanding because it is, you know, when it happens, it happens quickly and you have to make some calls quickly, and you sometimes don't know or have access to the internet at those times, but.
Another thought that came to my mind, and this is probably more of a question for West Penn Power on like strategy, but I've sometimes got emails ahead of a storm, but other times not, that would, you know, give you tips on, you know, just preparing for the storm, but then also what you do if you do lose power or this happens or whatnot, so. Just something I wanted to bring up, you know. Next up, Finance Committee, Mr. Heller.
Yeah, so a couple of things I wanted to bring to everybody's attention, the Finance Committee. The first thing, and it is probably the largest, you know, just a little bit of a concern, so we'll bring it up from, you know, the staff perspective too and the board's perspective. We reviewed the budget timeline, and in the timeline, you'll note that it's actually coming to the municipal, to the municipalities between June 17th and July 17th for comments, updates, et cetera. Folks on the board and staff, you know, I know we recognize that if it's happening between June 17th and July 17th, we have two holidays in there. We have Juneteenth and we have the Fourth of July. And on top of that, we also have all the CIP work that we do in the middle of it, which means road tours, special meetings, et cetera. So our timeframe, unfortunately, I think we need to maybe work with COG or figure out what we can do to make sure that they're here and we're hearing from them and we're able to offer feedback in a timely manner to fit within that, that timeframe there. It is subject to change. If we needed to, maybe we could ask for, you know, some sort of, you know, leeway or waiver, but right now it is set June 17th to July 17th to get that feedback from the different municipalities. So just raising that as maybe discussion topic, or at least for awareness or information. Couple other things, I want to just say thanks to Todd Grady, who came and he presented on ClearGov, that was fascinating, so we got to see the tool. And actually, the fact that, you know, reinforces that we are using the tool here in Ferguson Township behind the scenes, which is always nice to see. And I say behind the scenes because if you're a resident, you log onto the website and you start looking for stuff, you may not see a little ClearGov symbol on the right side, but it's there, it is running in the background, it is generating a lot of our data, so it was very cool. Another topic is the fund balance policy. We are looking at, at making changes to those fund balance policies, and it sounds like going forward, we're going to look at an individual director area, so department area, I should say, to see what is right for each of those departments. Related to the Government Finance Officers Association General Recommendations, what does it look like for one department? Do they need to carry a little bit more over? Do they need to carry less, why, et cetera? It sounds like so far, the finance office in COG is looking at a little bit more of a restrictive fund balance policy, so a little less of, you know, maybe the 16% that the Government Finance Officers Association is recommending, and more like a 12.5% or a 45-day holdover type policy. But again, we're going to review them on an individual basis to see what is right, but those are some general guidelines that we had discussed. The other thing too, again, just back to the ClearGov, Finance Committee at COG is going to start using that in what I'll call a pilot, the Finance Committee as well, I'm sorry, the Finance Group as well as the Facilities Group, they're going to do it and do some lifting and shifting from Excel files to learn what ClearGov can do, and then the other departments will start to use it as well. So why I'm saying that is, this is a transition time for COG. It's probably gonna be, I know with IT systems, you know, you're talking at least 12 months, maybe 18 months before they start to really feel and learn all the capabilities and what it's gonna look like. So this might impact some of the things that we're used to seeing from them. Some of the, not so much the reports, but things in the CIP, et cetera. But I know with Todd's help and support from other folks that are using ClearGov, But I know with Todd's help and support from other folks that are using ClearGov, we should see some similarities, but we can also, I just want to kind of let folks, make folks aware that this is a learning time for them, and really want to give them the space to figure this stuff out. And then finally, Patty, there was a mention at the end, I forget who brought it up, to say, hey, in the future, we really want to understand what all these different parks committees do, and how they're related, and who's in charge of what budgets, and who's looking at this and that, and we all went, yeah, meeting adjourned. It was just, it's a big topic, so I just thought that was something that came in, you know, at the end, but I wanted to raise awareness.
Yeah, yeah, actually, that's what I was going to ask you about, like, what was that about?
That was just, it was, you can go to the tape, it was like a 30-second statement, and we all went, huh, yep, and that was where it left.
Okay.
And again, that's me paraphrasing.
Yep.
In case you couldn't tell.
Thank you.
No problem. Yeah.
What was the dates of, was it the CIP for, was that the budget for COG?
It was for reviewing the budget and us giving feedback on the budget, happening between June 17th and July 17th.
Well, we have two meetings in between that, one on the 17th and one on the 15th.
So, yeah.
And I will look to the manager when we get to that timeframe, and we will explore all our options.
So, ours are scheduled and set and set down, so, and we did email COG and notified them in December and January, and we gave them advance notice that this was adopted, the schedule had been adopted by the Board of Supervisors, and then I just respect that they're going to make their decisions and plan in accordance to what's best for them, but they had access to that schedule. My question, though, for clarification would be, is it that they're reviewing the budget or their CIP? That's a notable difference.
Sure.
Because if they're advanced in reviewing the operating, or what does COG call it, the summary operating budget, that's timely. I mean, we won't even be in our operating budget discussions until October. And so, I think, you know, over the years, it's been a conversation that, I hate to say the chicken or the egg, but, right, so like, is, do the elected officials want to approve prior to COG having their budget discussions, which would ultimately inform COG, here's how much money the township has presented in the budget, and that could be done with an estimate, and ultimately, the way we could estimate at a staff level is by way of maybe a, I call it a cap, but others prefer the term targeted, but is that term targeted, targeted, what is that called?
Contribution.
There's a word. I call it a cap. It's a cap, right? Like, we're saying, we're going to estimate that the increased costs are going to be no more than 5%, and this is how much we're going to allocate for the COG. That may or may not be perceived as a collaborative or a less-than collaborative approach, so I can understand why some may want to say, well, let's go through the process that COG facilitates, and let's hear what their needs are, and then let's determine how much of that gets managed by the Finance Committee, knowing that each member municipality has a representative and can do the work to kind of dwindle down those numbers before the presentation comes to each member municipality. I don't think there's a wrong approach or a right approach, but I do agree with Supervisor Heller that there should be some level of synergy in understanding that this is the shared approach. And so, COG, to be fair to COG, has an understanding, like, okay, this is what Ferguson is going to take, a cap approach, and they're going to tell us what the percentages are, and we're going to work within those means. That's the leadership, that's what I've heard from our current Executive Director in terms of accepting, like, you are our customer, and we're providing a service to you. And so, I've heard that type of position that he's taken, and so, I don't know that that approach would be frowned upon, but I would agree, I think that as Finance Committees having those discussions, really looking to see what the role will be in terms of scheduling. Ours are, just this morning, I came in, all the department heads received emails before 6:30 a.m. this morning, where I was identifying what our priority schedule looked like to get us in preparation so we could have our budget presentations to the board in June.
And just for clarification, this is the SG, I'm sorry, the SGSI, so it's the whole thing, Strategic Guide to Services and Investments, that's going to be sent to us for review on, by June 17th. And then, what I call the budget hearings, which I was told we don't use the term budget hearings, it said they were workshops and other things in COG, those don't happen, of course, later on until, and I have to, yeah, until September 8th to September 16th, so that's the later one. But again, the stuff that, you know, we see during the summer, reviewing what they're proposing, et cetera, that with municipalities happens between June 17th and July 17th. So, if we need to take back any clarifications, we can do that.
So, that was like, yeah, like, their CIP and work program.
It was the CIP, but it also had operations in it and other things.
But instead of doing both separately, they just combined it in the one?
Well, there is now the pushed, oh, gosh, I'm forgetting, I think it's with the P, project plan, program plan, merging that with.
Maybe the program plan now.
Yeah, merging it in. So, things are going to get consolidated, and that's what's going to be reviewed here with the municipalities and others by June, or at least presented to us by June 17th.
It makes a lot more sense instead of CIP, program plan, and then budget, like, how many other more 100-page-plus endeavors do you get hit with within, you know, a short timeframe like that?
So, if nothing else, ongoing discussion, if I misstated anything or misspoke, you know, we can always clarify, you know, another point here, but that's kind of where things were, and that was a little bit of a red flag that I wanted to say, because I know we're already going to be busy at that time. Yeah.
Yeah, good point. Thank you.
If there was nothing else, that will move us to Executive Committee meeting. We did receive an update and presentation from the Facilities Administrator, the same one that was presented to the Facilities Committee and the Finance Committee. The Executive Director did give a little bit of an update on Whitehall Road Regional Park, they'll be meeting with Ferguson Township this week. Ben had shared he's looking to ask the Township Stormwater Engineer to work directly with Stahl Schaefer, he wants, Ben's looking for some extra assistance, and I imagine more of that will be discussed when he meets with staff later this week. But Ben is trying to prioritize getting the park open. I know that's been something that's been in the back of a lot of people's minds, the lingering question, when's the park going to open? So, more to come on that. Nobody has any questions for me, I'm ready to go to new business.
New business.
Well, unfinished business, but there's no unfinished business, so. Darn, I missed another one. Department reports, I will recognize the manager for that.
Thank you, Chair. A variety of the agenda is attached as a department report, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions on that?
I'd say thank you, it's very thorough, consistent, numbers are there, filled out, they add up. Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
And while it wasn't part of the report, I think it is appropriate considering the events of Sunday, that, just big shout-out to staff, from police to Centris, it looks like you did do some things on your day off.
It was a team effort, there was several of us in coordination and communication that day.
Needed to be a team effort, and, you know, we've, Mr. Patterson and I were discussing, we even seen Public Works out and about, clearing the leaves from the storm drains, and I guess they're probably getting close to spring cleaning mode, so, you know, big hand to everyone for, you know, all their service to our community, so.
Thank you, thank you. I'll pass that along to Public Works, and yes, you know, many, many thanks to our communications team, to our Police Department, our Public Works Department, again, a great deal of coordination, a lot of folks came in on their day off to ensure the safety and proper management of road closures, you know, repairs, not repairs, excuse me, but making sure that there was a safety approach to some of the damage that took place on Sunday.
Moving on, no unfinished business, we do have new business, the consent agenda. We have an award of a replacement of an HVAC system in the computer room, an award of curb and ramp upgrades, special event permit, Walk MS Your Way Central PA, and a special event permit for Care Start. If there is no one that wants to pull any of those items, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mrs. Patty, so moved.
Do we have a second?
This is Matt, I'll second.
Got a motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Mr. Heller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, say no. Motion passes.
HVAC.
Item 7-2, a discussion and approval of a preliminary land, preliminary final land development plan for Blaze Alexander Mazda Body Shop located at 1703 West College Avenue. It is in the general commercial and industrial and zoning districts in the corridor overlay district, and this has a modification waiver request, and I will recognize the Planning and Zoning Director.
Thank you, Chair and Board. Provided in the agenda is the Blaze Alexander Mazda Body Shop Land Development Plan. The plan proposes an 18,882-square-foot body shop behind the existing dealership, it is at 1703 West College. It's on approximately 18.08 acres, after consolidation, it will be 20.576 acres. The Planning Commission held a work session January 13th of this year. On February 24th, they voted unanimously to approve the plan and recommend it to the Board of Supervisors with modifications, waivers, and conditions. Additionally, on January 28th, the zoning board, excuse me, the zoning hearing board granted a variance to allow the replacement of a stormwater detention basin in an area that contains Nolan soils. The applicant then met with staff to clarify requirements, and an additional waiver was then submitted to meet parking lot standards related to a portion of the existing parking that's previously used for display, now shown as service parking. Related, the applicant does intend to submit a plan for a larger expansion that will be forthcoming. So therefore, on March 10th, the Planning Commission lifted this again and unanimously voted to revise the recommendation for the plan approval. It's not a what we had before plus what we added because some of what they did took away what we had before. So, what's presented to you is a clean slate. You have, if you really want to follow along, that was all provided in your packet, but I'm going to skip to the conclusions. So, March 10th, unanimous approval for the plan with modifications, waivers, and conditions as follows. Modifications and waivers are allowed pursuant to Chapter 22, 105, and one is to allow the combination of the preliminary and final plan as one. The second is related to landscaping and buffer yard to allow alternative planting locations, essentially existing conditions and portions of this. Number three is the newer part, and that's related to what I just described, this additional parking, by changing what it was called, kicked in additional conditions. Chapter 22, 303, 6C allows the board to approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove on the basis of noncompliance. So, conditions that are proposed and are recommended are, one, one that you see often, subject to approval and recording of the stormwater management plan, two and three are essentially administrative items, you know, related to fees, reflecting some correct things on an additional plan. Number four, there is a lot consolidation in progress, and that is, what you see reflects that consolidation, so it's just finalizing that. Number five is related to that same waiver where we went back to the Planning Commission, and it's, you could kind of think of it as a performance guarantee, it's, there's a phrase in Chapter 22, 105, to substantially secure the objectives and standards and requirements of Chapter 22, which is the subdivision in land development code. And that guarantee is that the applicant will pave that, the area in question, because it's currently not paved, if they do not submit a Phase 2, which will swoop in, the Phase 2 is for a much larger expansion, and that will swoop in, this whole area show everything properly done. If they don't submit that by October, they will pave that, that is the condition, so that it's not just kicking the can and then it gets kicked again. That will be taken care of as if we, it'll be, it'd be taken care of with this condition. So therefore, the recommended motion is that the Board of Supervisors approve the Blaze Alexander Mazda Body Shop Land Development Plan dated November 14th, 2024, last revised February 19th, 2025, with modifications, waivers, and conditions as described, and also, the applicant, the engineer is present.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I know there was a lot of reference to Chapter 22. For those in the audience, we're just talking about, you know, the Code of Ordinances, which can be found on our website when you click Code of Ordinances, if you wanted to actually go through and read them in simple terms, think of them basically the rules that the builder needs to follow when submitting a plan, so just wanted to leave that out for reference. Any comments, well, actually, I guess, give questions, if there's any questions for the Planning and Zoning Director, and then entertain a motion for deliberation there.
My only comments are related to what you would say there, you don't even have to go to the website, you can just Google, you know, Ferguson Township, and then enter, you know, Chapter 4, like, I was curious more about the lighting side of everything, especially for the next one, and there it all is, out there for the public and everybody to see, all the ordinances, if you really want to have some good material to help you fall asleep at night.
Yeah.
Wow. Yes, those are my only comments, and I'm happy to make a motion. All right, this is Matt, and I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the Blaze Alexander Mazda Body Shop Land Development Plan dated November 14th, 2024, last revised February 19th, 2025, with modifications, waivers, and conditions as described.
Mrs. Patty, I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Heller, second by Ms. Stevens. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, next, item 7-3, a discussion and approval of a preliminary land development plan for the PSU Start Lab Edition and Renovation located at 3127 Research Drive in the Light Industry Research and Development Zoning District. I'll recognize the Planning and Zoning Director.
Chair and Board, the big difference here, as you emphasized, is this is preliminary, this is not final approval, whereas the last one was a combination preliminary and final. So, this will go back again to the Planning Commission and for, when it's ready for the final, and you will see this again. So, that said, provided in the agenda is the PSU Start Lab Edition and Renovation Preliminary Land Development Plan, again, dated October 25th, 2024, and as revised. And the application is to construct a 13,000-square-foot addition, it's on the northern side of the building, 7,990 square-foot storage yard is included with that, let's see, most of it, I'm trying not to repeat what you had just said. So, the Planning Commission reviewed the plan at the December 9th, 2024 meeting. Pending and unresolved items were the landscaping plan and approval of the stormwater management plan. The landscaping plan has since been submitted and reviewed. The proposed site does consist of the existing research facility used by the Pennsylvania State, Penn State University, and I'm advised, it's been there for the past 50 years, and the parcel is approximately 10 acres, it's bounded by residential to the northeast, and office business light industry on other sides, two points of access to Research Drive. Let's see, skipping ahead. You also have a summary memo included. You also have a summary memo included of the review items, and this is in part because it's spent a little bit of time here. The, if, there was a parking study, which helped inform some of the, the number of parking spaces that were used. All of that has been incorporated. Staff has found that the landscaping plan does meet the requirements, lighting meets the requirements regarding environmental issues, no flood hazard areas are, were found for the flood insurance maps, no wetlands in this area, and it's not within 10,000 feet of any public wells. The comprehensive plan designation for this area is industrial and office. And the Planning Commission, again, held a work session December 9th, and then on March 10th, voted unanimously to recommend approval of this proposal to the board. The recommendation is that the board approve this preliminary plan with the condition that the stormwater management item be completed. And also, the applicant, we have one sitting here with us in the audience, and I believe one is online as well, or maybe two.
Any questions for Ms. Matt?
One, just community feedback. I've received several inquiries over the past few months of what's going on, how's that going to affect my house that's in, you know, in that northeast section that is housing? Were we able to kind of receive said feedback and then make some, were there any adjustments based on that feedback?
We did not receive, I did not receive any direct feedback. I don't know if Planning Commission received feedback from a resident.
There were just questions, is what I recall. I don't, I don't recall that there was.
Hi, I'm Paul Politz, I'm with Gannett Fleming Engineers. Stahl Schaefer works for us during this project, for the project team. So with the awareness and the need to make sure that we are cognizant of the community behind where this project is located, has been at the forefront of our planning process. So even placement of the building, placement of this mechanical yard, storage yard, that was put in place so we're not directed toward the community in the rear of the development or of Penn State's plot. So we've been, we were aware of that, we're aware of, you know, comments or other types of communication related to noise and acoustical things, and those in the past have, we've assisted in helping remediate current, I don't know if you would, yeah. So we're aware of that, and we've included that in our design related to that, those types of topics. So acoustical analysis, baselines, and new were conducted to ensure that, you know, we're going to have a baseline, we have a plan to remediate sound around the mechanical equipment, and those things that could, you know, potentially affect the community.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yes, Mr. Heller.
My concern was related to the lighting in the neighborhood, so that's what drove me into Chapter 4, and then to bed. But I think it's an important one that, you know, listening to the community and understanding, of course, that we have ways of measuring the light and other things that we might hear after construction, or at least offer feedback on, is an important thing for us to at least open the door and be cognizant about that we might hear some things from residents after construction, so those are my only comments.
Ms. Strickland?
Along those same lines, I just wanted to acknowledge too that I had received emails and with concerns that were mentioned with the sound and the lighting, and I'm wondering if you can also, to the planning director, maybe just explain to us how this fits, how this particular use fits into light industry and research, development, zoning? How does this use fit in there? What was the particular usage that we, so that residents can understand why this would fit there?
I understand it to be a research facility that is existing, and that's, is that something maybe I could have the engineer give something, a more specific sign exactly what is occurring on the interior, that it does fit with the zoning district?
Yeah, the current, this is, the project is named Start Plus. There's already a Start Lab in the facility now. This would grow, you know, into another space of the facility to conduct more research related to it. Some of it does have governmental and other business-related activities to it, so industrial research is occurring for this space. And it would, the footprint was in a location adjacent to the building, as far as the effect of the industrial area, I think it doesn't really change the use of the facility. I don't know if that answers your question.
Thank you, yes, it still falls into that light industry you're saying.
Yes.
Appreciate that, and again, as the other supervisors had mentioned, this goes back to the Planning Commission, so residents can come and voice their comments and concerns there as well, so appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Heller?
Just a random thing that occurred to me, and it was because I heard, did I hear, can't be, or construction gets impacted when it's within 10,000 feet of a public well?
It depends on the. I think we mentioned this before, that the zone, what zone the well is categorized as, right? So there's different categories, if you will, and that is certainly something we can further look into. I'm hearing, I'm seeing from the planning and zoning director that it's Zone 2, which would have a different proximity, and I believe permissible, but I would lean into the planning and zoning director or the team to take the time to research to confirm that they are proposing the, the construction within the limits of the ordinance. We can follow up on that, or she can speak to it now?
Yeah, I can, I can follow it up if you would like to see that before they come back, or we can make sure, I'm taking notes on these key items, so that when we see them for the preliminary plan, it's our goal to continue to work with the applicant as well, so we don't just get an application and then we have something, to make sure all of these concerns are not only incorporated, they're already shown in many ways to meet the code, but to highlight how they are meeting the code, and maybe if there's an opportunity for additional mitigating efforts or interventions, rather, that can be put in.
And that's why I'm interested, because I just pulled it up here, USGS has an observation well just across the street from there, so there's a, it measures, you know, our, the water level below the surface. So I'm wondering, and the stuff that SCBWA is pulling out is also that water in different wells that they have, so it just caught my attention that within 10,000 feet, when SCBWA is probably as a crow flies within that, and has other monitoring wells and wells that they pull from, what does that really mean? So maybe that's for a future conversation, not strictly related to this project, but I'm just curious, if nothing else.
Well, it's important enough, in the meantime, I'll get some further clarification on all of this review.
Thank you.
There's no other questions, I would entertain a motion?
This is Amari, move to approve the PSU Start Lab addition and renovation preliminary land development plan dated October 25th, 2024, revised February 3rd, 2025.
Mrs. Patty, I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Patterson, second by Ms. Stevens. Any discussion? I, I just say, you know, I, you know, followed the Planning Commission on this, and even had an opportunity to tour this facility, and definitely appreciate Penn State's willingness to be good neighbors with the community. They've taken a lot of actions thus far to try to mitigate that noise, and it looks like they're trying to keep that in mind with this plan as well, and I think everyone's open to any, anything further that, you know, can possibly continue to, you know, keep that at the forefront, so. I, if I recall right, this isn't like necessarily a 24-hour operation, they try to keep it during the day, and I don't think there's really much going on in the weekend, so relatively not like crazy busy, so to say, so. If there's nothing else, I say all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, item eight, communications to the board.
I had a communication about the process of the zoning and hearing board, and then I also had some questions about the Wawa, and if anything had been going on with the Wawa, as they've been digging up the lot and that sort of thing, those were my only communications.
Had some communications, there's some just concerns from residents on the local impacts of federal changes. So, just in some of my questioning, it's based on that, folks are really concerned about funding and where we get it, and how that impacts us, so we just need to keep that in mind, you know, as we continue to make decisions. And then the county, I know that they set up this new tax system, looks like it's working well, I received mine, and did notice that they have six mills or three, and so, you know, that'll, that'll be an interesting thing from a budgeting perspective on, what are we getting for that six mills? That helps offset local, I mean, it's all money, and it's, yeah. But, but I just wanted to definitely thank the county, there's a lot of work done across the county, and we are very thankful for what they do, and appreciate the collaboration. Over.
Any other communications, Mr. Heller?
Nothing that hasn't been mentioned.
I did get a communication from a resident, just had some concerns about participation in the meetings, and first of all, we welcome the public to join us for our meetings, whether that be here or online. There was some concerns about, I guess you could call it maybe like a lack of plain language in our agenda packets, and, you know, I, I can understand it can get sometimes intimidating when we're talking in acronyms or specific sections of our Code of Ordinances, but I'm going to, you know, talk to the manager as to, you know, what options we have, and try and some things differently in the meetings, you know, if we need to take a little pause and, you know, just briefly, you know, make a note here or there, like I did the night with the, when we were talking about, you know, the land development plans, you know, just for like, hey, you want to go read this, or wondering what this is, this is what we're talking about, so, you know, want to keep that in mind, because I think that also goes back to even something Patty had brought up in our last meeting, just making sure the meetings are accessible, that everyone, you know, could be able to attend them and understand them and benefit from them, so, you know, we'll continue to do our best and always open any input and suggestions that people have, so. If there's nothing else, we have some calendar items, and Patty, would you like to present item 10?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? All right, we're adjourned, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.